Anyway, I'm streaming right now. Probably will be in in a few minutes.
Oh, Kayla.
I have to say...
I'm so sure you'll see this.
I heard they existed when we had you.
I kind of thought, I know, you're like, it's more like...
Yeah, Gina, it's been pretty good. We got Helen Jackson doing all the pretty lute music. It's pretty fun.
Okay?
Yeah.
Baby is low. Yeah, that's better.
Thank you.
This was a combined effort with Gina. I know how to fight a villain. I need more fighters. Got letters going out everywhere, huh? I like it, Craig. Thank you. Thank you.
Everybody got a copy?
That's not my agenda. We're past time to begin. We apologize for this. Our workshop session, we started at three o'clock and we were still chugging along till later than we normally do, so it took us a minute to collect ourselves again and have a little bite to eat. And I apologize to you for starting a little bit late. We appreciate everybody being here. And we've got an opening that will be presented by... If I can find the agenda here.
David Erickson.
Professor Erickson.
Professor Erickson. Dr. Erickson, as he always says, to everybody else.
I'd like to start with my opening in the form of a prayer. Our Heavenly Father, we're indeed grateful to be able to be here. We're grateful for this opportunity to be able to gather as a council and as a community, be able to be here to discuss the themes which are in need at this time for Cache County. We're grateful for watching over us, for inspiring us and helping us. We're grateful for these troubled times that we can work through, that we can become stronger, rely on Thee, and to listen to each other and be kinder to each other. We would, at this time, ask Thee to bless all those that are in service of Thee for the, and on behalf of the county. We pray for them. We pray for their help, for their strength. We pray for their genuine concern to be foremost in their decision-making abilities. We pray for Thy Spirit to be here, to help us to make decisions with clarity, help us be mindful of those that we represent. We're grateful for those that are here to speak this night. We pray that they will be able to do so openly. We're, again, grateful for all these things, grateful for this beautiful valley, for each other to be community members here, and as we humbly say in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
I repeat the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Do we have approval for the agenda for tonight?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And for the minutes of our last meeting, on August 11th, are there additions or corrections to the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Any follow-up to the minutes of our last meeting? All right. We'll turn some time over now to Executive Butters for his report to the council.
Battery mic went bad, so I'm just going to put this in over here. See, I do not have any appointments to make at this time, and the July financials are on your device there that you can watch or take a look at. I'd be happy to answer any questions if I need to. Other items, I just wanted to give you an update on several things that I've been working on and my chief deputy has been working on. The Cache County Economic Development Director position, we have drafted a job description, we being Bryce and Amy, our HR Director, and myself. And so, members of the Economic Development Alliance that are on the council, Paul and Gina, have been asked to serve on the selection committee for our Economic Development Director, and myself, and Amy, and likely Bryce, and I've asked Jamie Andres, our Chamber of Commerce Director, to be involved in that process. So, we will move forward with that. Our job description, we will open up that position for applications on Friday this week. We're looking forward to that. The EMS, our county EMS system, we've worked, and I believe I've updated you that we do have the cities on the south end of the valley from Mendon South that have agreed to coming into a new SEMS organization, and we are currently still negotiating with Smithfield and the cities in the north. So, we hope to get that wrapped up as soon as possible. We are meeting with them to see if we can't get on the same page and work out one system for the county minus Logan City. Green waste, you recall, we had a discussion about that, and there was... The county decided not to adopt a $1 charge for the green waste containers in the cities. And I have spoken with Issa Hamud from Logan City, and the request was that the mayor and I get together to try and work out some type of an agreement. So, I'm hoping that we can meet next Monday to discuss the green waste containers. And I think that, at this time, it looks like we may just take the route of letting each city decide whether they want to pay the additional cost to have that service provided by Logan City. But those things will all have to be worked out, so... Still in negotiations there. The 3200 South Highway 8991 intersection realignment, that discussion is continuing on, and I'm trying to defend the alternative two, that the council took that position to support the alternative two. And we've had a couple of different calls and meetings with UDOT, and they have run into some difficulties with historical and environmental challenges to that alternative. But our directive to them was, they can all be worked out, and this is the best option, and we need to move forward with it. So, that's what we're trying to work with there, and to meet the timeline so that we can still qualify for the federal funding that is available for the safety aspect of that project. And I do have, and have distributed to all of you, a copy of a letter to go to Governor Herbert, and I will get that to his office either tonight or early in the morning, requesting that the county be allowed to move to the green status. And I won't read that to you, but I will just point out one paragraph, "Since Cache County's COVID-19 case count has continued to improve with a steady decline in our 70 positivity rate over the last six weeks, the other two counties in our health district, Box Elder and Rich, are also experiencing very low positive cases. In addition, our hospitalization rate has remained well below the available number of ICU beds." And then it would go on to highlight, one of the reasons is because of the citizens of our county have taken this responsibility of keeping themselves safe and helping to keep others safe by physically distancing, washing their hands, and also voluntarily wearing face coverings. And so, I think that's contributed greatly to the decrease that we're seeing in our numbers, and we feel like now is the time to request that we move into that green phase to hopefully be able to get back to our new normal as soon as possible. And that's all that I have to cover this time. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And Craig, that's the first time we've ever actually sent a letter to the governor, right? We made a vote, but we never sent a letter until now.
That's correct. And I think it was maybe six weeks ago, it may have been more than that, that we actually voted to request that, but we did not send the letter to the governor officially. So, we will officially send that in. A lot of water under the bridge since then.
Yes, there has been.
A lot of new experience and new information that have helped to make this an easier decision right now.
Thank you very much. We don't have anything on the consent agenda tonight. We do have one item of special interest, to introduce Jenna Dykman as the new Family Consumer Science Agent, and Blake Clark as the new 4-H Coordinator over livestock from USU Extension. And if you'd like to introduce yourselves a little bit.
So, thank you for this opportunity. I'm J.D. Gunnel, Director of the USU Extension Office, and I don't have very many words tonight. I did put on each of your packets this handout. It just highlights, you know, this has been a really weird year with COVID-19, and there's been a lot of reactions all over the board. And it's been interesting to me to see our office has become more busy, more important to the citizens, as kids have been forced to stay home from school. Our 4-H clubs have skyrocketed. Our participation in the county fair was through the roof. We've had to be a little bit more creative on how we reach our constituents. It's not a lot of face-to-face classes, but we've done a lot of Facebook, Instagram posts, and what we've also noticed is it's forced us to get back to the basics of service. And I was just talking to Amy about, this is a very unique county in that the mothership, being the universities here amongst us, and sometimes that can be good and sometimes it cannot. But most of the time, it's good, and being in Extension, we have a duty to serve our constituents and the public. And so, I just wanted to introduce two of our newest team members. We have Jenna Dykman. We stole her from BYU Idaho and told her that she's supposed to wear the right color of blue now. And then Blake Clark, we stole from the state 4-H office, and he's over shooting sports statewide, but also does a lot with our livestock program. So, I'm just going to let them introduce themselves, but thank you for your continued support in helping us help the communities.
Thank you very much.
My name's Blake Clark. Like you said, I worked up at the college as a shooting sports coordinator for the whole state, and I just moved down into the Cache County and do livestock courses. We do dogs and outdoor education, so we just try to help kids in the outdoors, so that's everything.
Thank you very much for being here.
Yeah, and like you said, I'm Jenna Dykman, and yeah, I just moved here from Idaho. I was teaching nutrition classes, so I'm excited to start working with the community and being involved with them, and I'm a dietitian as well, so...
And yeah, go Aggies.
Thank you, Jenna.
It may be the one time we can say, "Welcome to warm Cache County," if there's any...
All right. We don't have any department or committee reports, nothing on the Board of Legalization, no public hearings, no pending actions. We'll move right to Item 13, Initial Proposals for Consideration of Action. The first item is a discussion on a request to allow unincorporated peninsulas in the annexation of 18.553 acres from the unincorporated county into Hiram City.
Hi, Council. So, as he mentioned, we do have a proposal we've received from an applicant in Hiram for five parcels, approximately 18.5 acres, to be annexed into Hiram City. The reason this is coming before you is because it does create an unincorporated county island or peninsula, and by state code, that just has to get the stamp of approval from the county council. It is within the Hiram City annexation boundaries, and it's something that Hiram City has expressed interest in annexing. So, with that, I have to answer any questions you might have.
Just want to, have you seen any kind of negative... Or unintended consequences that would be negative from doing this?
The only thing that has me a little concerned is the attachment to, which has the roads to be maintained by Hiram and county. I haven't seen that they've actually signed off that they're going to accept that. I wasn't in those conversations that they had with Chris and Matt, so I just don't know for sure that they're willing to sign off on those maintenance agreements, and I don't see Ron from Hiram here, so...
We have somebody on the council.
Oh.
I'm on the City Council, Greg Rassenson. I... Hiram City has several different agreements with Cache County for road maintenance, and we are certainly willing to enter into a similar agreement on this property or the roads in this vicinity as well. We have tried to get in touch with the road department, and I think that the schedule and I don't know if that's all been finalized, but we certainly are willing to do that. It's a clear task.
So, am I assuming Hiram is okay with this?
Yes, yes, we are. Hiram is willing to accept this annexation.
And it's right next to the one we just got annexed.
Yeah. Okay.
It's the Mountain View Edition. So, that is a good question. We found out about this originally, I think, two days before it went to the Hiram City Council. So, we found out about it, and we actually wrote them a memo saying the county hasn't agreed to this, so we asked them to come back and get the county council's consent to move forward with this project. I can't answer that question, I don't know. I haven't seen a petition come in either.
But there has been a petition.
Hiram City has road annexation.
Yes.
Yeah, but the concern is the county hasn't received a petition, so...
Okay.
So, the applicant themselves has to make a petition to the county for this or harm the city?
Typically, it's supposed to be the applicant. Some cities do take over that responsibility, but... Yeah. And I don't know if it just slipped through the cracks or what happened, but really, before we received the petition, they should have the consent of the council anyways, because it does create a peninsula, so if we need to, we can have them submit a petition after getting the consent from the council, we can just proceed from there.
So, if we were to approve it subject to the application from whichever party, would that be fine?
I believe so.
Is that okay, Chris? Because we usually don't do those kind of things.
So, typically, it should have gone to the clerk's office, and the clerk disseminates it to the rest of us to review and make sure everything's in order. We have had on occasions where those slipped through the cracks, and for one reason or another, they're not sent to the clerk. It's still possible they could get that stuff to the clerk's office so that it's properly documented, and they can update the voting districts as need be, and any other updates. I don't know all the updates you do. But I think that's still feasible. The biggest thing was the issue with the roads from the land use side, making sure that they're being properly accounted for and maintained. Outside of that, I don't think there's an issue. As long as the clerk's office is fine with getting that, I'm sure Hiram can send it over first thing in the morning.
You and Matt, y'all are comfortable with the road piece?
Yes.
Yes.
There is, there is the agreements that we've talked about, Matt, Public Works. When we start chalking these up and make islands, there is a lot of coordination. There's a lot of utilities that want to go in. There's a, you know, maintenance, who's going to maintain, who's going to chip seal up, who's going to run stop signs. So, you know, for the Public Works, it is definitely better to not create islands, peninsulas, just from coordination efforts. You know, they might have a house, who's going to service it with water, you know, who's going to follow what's about on a house. So, you know, most of these agreements do work theirself out. Long-term, bigger picture, it's always a nice, nice thing square. And, and this part of Hiram is being chopped up quite a bit, but I think we can work through those agreements.
Yeah, yeah, this one, their, their water's already there and their road's there. And all those things are in place.
So, can I speak to that a little bit? If that's okay. So, one of the reasons why these, these peninsula are coming into this area is, is because of the, the state law that now allows you to have peninsula and islands. And property owners out there already have a home, who already have their, their allowance in place. They're not interested in annexing. And you can't force them to, you can't sweep them in anymore. And so, those adjacent property owners to make this not be a peninsula have been approached by the petitioner and encouraged to annex, but, but there's no way to bring them in with a larger parcel or anything else like that. And so, Hiram City is interested in this property because if the other people joining and things in that area are not interested in annexing, then by not annexing this parcel, you have to basically stop saying future expansion in that area. And so, yes, this may be a peninsula at this point. We're hoping in the future that adjoining property owners will choose to, to annex. But, but that's the reason why the peninsula is there is because we can't force other, other property owners to do so. And we're, we're, we're looking for this. And as far as the roads and things, as we understand, coordination issues and things that are required there, we have had some discussion about annexing the whole road. The county policy is annexing the center of the road. So, there certainly are some things that could be worked out.
Thank you.
It appears as there's already a peninsula there.
Or an island, even.
Or an island.
Yeah, there's an island, yeah.
They annexed. He didn't want to be annexed, so.
Okay. Any other questions? We don't, we don't have a petition from the, from the proponent, but I guess.
Well, it's in, it's actually in these attachments. It should have come, if it came to zoning, they should have actually forwarded it on to us.
So, we just saw the, the way we actually came to know about this was the Utah Public Notice website. I was looking at it and Hiram was taking action on this. So, I looked at the parcels on that.
That's how we usually find them, too.
Yeah.
So, there's, there are other, I'm a little worried about, there's other places I know of right now that are in annexation proceeding. We not know about them either.
Well, we, we find out when we see them in the paper. That's about the only way we can find out. They haven't told us otherwise.
There's not a check and balance system.
Well, this, I think the state law only says you have to if it's, if it's an island or a peninsula.
They still need to notify the clerk's office.
Have to say we're doing it, but we don't have to approve it.
If there were annexation, they're supposed to notify our office.
Yeah, but we don't have to.
No, you guys don't.
Well, okay, we can move on to resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I, I just am a little bit uncomfortable. We're doing something that everybody don't know about. Does anyone else feel in that?
We just did it in Providence.
This first part was a discussion.
We have a lot of discussion in Providence.
Yeah. This next one, the next item 13B is Resolution 20, 202021, which is allowing this annexation to happen. And so, this next item, we can either vote on it, we can, it's an initial proposal, so we don't have to make a decision tonight.
Can we open for public comment?
Yeah.
It's not a public hearing, but.
Yeah, I think we need to have a public hearing on this, don't we?
On an annexation?
See, you don't have to have a public hearing. It's.
We have not in the past.
I need to clarify, you're not, you're, you're making a decision if you agree to allow it to occur, to allow the unincorporated peninsula.
Yeah.
Or to protest.
The city's going to have to decide, yeah, or to protest. The city's going to have to decide whether it's an appropriate annexation.
The city's already decided.
It indicated that they are on board with that. So, you have a window to protest that.
Well, it's not a protest. It's, you have to give consent. Without consent, then it can't go forward. So, the county council, you have the option of giving consent to allow this annexation to happen or not giving consent. And then it doesn't meet muster and it would sell.
But how could we give consent if we wouldn't have known about it? Phil, there's, there's something just wrong here or something weird.
Has there been any public input on this? I mean, if we're going to.
We don't gather public input.
We don't need public input, no.
Hiram has had a public hearing.
So, Hiram will be the one that people can go and visit.
Yes.
I just want to make sure people have an opportunity to voice their opinion. So, it's not here then?
It's not here. That's correct. It's just, the state code as it's written says the county must agree. It doesn't specify what that means. So, visiting with the county attorney's office, that means it should resort back to the county legislative body, which is the council. The council has not established a policy to, to give that authority to someone else to review that and issue an approval or denial. So, that's why it comes back to you just to say, do we want to allow in this instance an unincorporated peninsula to occur?
John, we follow the law here. If, if we're okay, I don't care. But I'm, I've got this uneasy feeling, but all of a sudden, things aren't going to the clerk and we don't know for sure. It doesn't sound very clean, in other words.
So, the state code, like Chris said, says that the county has to agree if there's going to be an island or a peninsula, an unincorporated island or peninsula left. Logan City on a recent one of these didn't come to the county and, and essentially said, well, we're doing it. And if you don't contest it during the 30-day contest period, then we'll assume you agreed. We, at the attorney's office, have taken the position that, no, when it says the council, the county needs to agree, that that means there needs to be an affirmative act by the council to agree. And we were a bit frustrated and expressed that to the Logan City Attorney's Office, that they didn't come initially and get agreement and, and instead just proceeded and, and read the code in a way that I think isn't real defensible. So, here, I think that where it has come to your attention, and it probably should have come initially to the county for a request to, to either agree or not, but it is now in front of you to, to either agree or not to this. That's, that's improvement, that it's here in front of you before it's actually happened. And, and I think that we could say, yes, you are following the law by either saying we agree to this or not agree to it.
And we would like to actually also hear those agreements, who's doing the roads, who's doing this and all that. But they're all in place. So, then, hey, the annexation's clean. We'd like, we'd like to hear that rather than, oh, we'll get together later on this.
And because you are the body that can agree or not agree, I think that you could withhold your agreement until that's in place, if you would like, and then act on it again if, if you, and that's a decision for you to make. But I think you could do that, say that we're, we're not agreeing at this point. We'd like to see things more in place. At the same time, if you haven't agreed, then really, it's our position that they shouldn't move forward and finalize everything if we haven't agreed, if you haven't agreed to it.
Well, I'll make a motion that we waive the rules.
Hold, hold one second, John, if you don't mind.
Well, as long as we can get it done.
Somebody wanted to make a comment, and I'll allow a comment if, if it's brief.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just wondering, if I'm the one that's supposed to bring the petition in, I have a property petition here and can supply my favor.
What's her name? We need her name.
Yeah. Can you give us your name?
Jamie Olson.
Jamie Olson? Okay.
From my understanding, it's a venture project that, because of that, we were, so I'm just wondering if I'm responsible to supply the petition to the county as well at Hiram City?
Well, that's what we're trying to ferret out. It sounds like, usually it's.
Sometimes the city will have, will do it, and sometimes the city makes the landowner do it. It just kind of depends.
Typically, from Hiram, we do see it. This, this feels like one that might have fallen through the cracks there because Hiram's usually one of the better cities about contacting us about annexation stuff. And when we, we brought this to their attention, they were really responsive, getting on the phone and trying to work something out with us. So, I don't think it was any intentional deceit or anything. I think it just fell through the cracks there in Hiram.
Okay. John, you were going to make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we waive the rules and adopt the Resolution 2021 for the fact that this is the first time I've had somebody from the council come and say, yeah, we'll adopt the road. That, that's a first. I love that. At least we, we have some commitment. And I know before we could do it in paradise, we had to sign saying, yeah, we'll adopt the road. I think we have that. I, I don't think waiting two more weeks is going to change anything.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Four nays or three?
Barbara is a nay.
Barbara's a nay, too.
Barbara's a nay.
Okay, so there's four.
Okay. Four nays, so the resolution does not pass at this time.
I'd like to see it in writing.
At this time.
Yeah, I'd like it in writing.
I'd like to make sure that we got the road situation more than, I think we can work it out. I, I'd like to see what exactly what they're going to do. Just there are just too many loose ends. It doesn't seem right in this.
Well, let's tell them what you, what we need, then.
Okay. The one thing that I really feel that they need is they need to get with the road department, make sure everybody's happy with what that's going to do. That's number one. And the second thing is, is when they get it done with the clerk, then that's number two, and then maybe we can talk again. And if it happens tomorrow, well, that's too bad. It's a day late for us to act on it.
Anything else?
I hate to vote against it when all they need to do is just take care of those things and then come back. I'd almost wish we'd have just, we should have probably just tabled it or something here until the next meeting.
You can still do that. I can't.
Can we still table it?
Oh, yeah, they can come up. They can bring it up next week.
That's a week. That's what we need to make sure happens.
Yeah, just make sure they know how to get back on the agenda, would you mind?
Yes.
So, they can submit.
Get those things taken care of and then come back in two weeks.
That's what I'd like.
Paperwork to the clerk's office. And then the road department gets with Hiram City, inks the deal, and then, then we come back in two weeks and, and can vote it through.
Vote on the resolution.
Okay.
Again, two weeks.
Okay.
Before we move on, could I ask Craig Rasmussen, did you have a question for us?
I think Chris might have just answered. I was just wondering if President, I understand Mr. Weiss, President, or, or.
Motion.
Motion. Thank you. Was to waive the rules and approve that. If that can't be done, would there be a substitute motion to approve this on the condition of the road agreement and the annexation condition being provided to the county clerk? Those two items we mentioned, they made as part of the condition to approve.
So, how are we going to know that?
First of all, we could ask Matt, could we rely on you to take care of that?
We can. I was, in the notes, I changed that to Public Works instead of the Roads Department. Yeah, we do have some interlocal agreements with Hiram, and we just need to make sure that gets added to it. It currently is not. And if that didn't get them waived, the county can still protest the annexation as it proceeds through the process.
So, do, so would you entertain a motion then if we, if, if I made the motion, substitute a motion for approval of Resolution 2021 contingent upon the Public Works Department agreeing with Hiram City to the road maintenance and the proper paperwork being submitted to the county clerk's office?
I'll accept that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Before you vote on that, I've just been told that the resolution itself may contain those conditions. So, we wanted to look at the resolution real quickly.
It's not. Sorry, so I know what it says. We don't have it. It's not here. If you look at the resolution, there's some qualifying comments there, one of them being the, I think it's just pulling from the summary here. Referring to Exhibit A, I believe, in the resolution. Sorry, I don't have a copy of that in front of me. So, if that reflects what the council intends, you might not need to make a, a specific motion towards it. If, if the requirement to make sure a petition arrives to the clerk's office is of issue, that can be resolved in the next five minutes, if that's a concern. But if it really is just a question of making certain that there's an agreement reached between the county and Hiram City, that's addressed specifically in the resolution itself.
That's just right. And Hiram City, it must agree to enter into an interlocal agreement with Cache County.
Provide full maintenance.
Correct.
Summer, winter, and everything. So, that's, that's pretty, that's literally what we need.
So, I need to amend the substitute motion?
Yep.
To just accept the resolution? Okay. Aye, the substitute motion is to waive the rules and approve Resolution 2021 allowing the unincorporated peninsula.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay. Passes. Thank you.
Working that out.
All right. Thirteen, item 13C, Approval of Tax Cancellation Request.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're going to miss the money.
That was crazy.
Okay. 13D, Approval of 2020 Tax Relief Filing Extension.
Yeah, we do that every year.
You do.
We do every year, yeah.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we approve or adopt the filing extension.
That's 6600.
Yeah.
30.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes as well. 13F, Discussion Litigation That Has Been Resolved. And.
We missed the budget. E.
Oh, yeah, E.
E.
Carl?
E. Oh, oh, yeah, skipped over the, the big E. 13E, Adoption of a tentative, of the tentative, 2021 Cache County Budget. We've had, we had a, a good workshop earlier and, and a couple of weeks ago as well. Do we have a motion to adopt that budget?
So, moved.
Now, what's the purpose of a tentative?
The state says you got to have one.
Just that we just got to just.
Kill in the wall.
Just start, start the process.
Yep.
Yeah. So, we got both, I've, I've always thought that was kind of dumb, but anyway.
Yeah, you can change it to the next state.
Right.
Yep. It will change.
I know.
Yep. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. And now, finally, 13F, Discussion on Litigation That Has Been Resolved.
I didn't think we ever did this.
How do we, how do we litigate?
Got it resolved?
Yeah. I guess somebody paid their boat off.
If we get it resolved, we can't keep riding out there.
Got a question. You guys don't have any input. I don't think Blake's ever owned anything, but I know he's bought cows and sheep or pigs.
That's another lesson.
No, that's the problem. Is that right?
Yeah.
He doesn't, he's not a cattle.
He only learned the lesson one time. So, as soon as you learn.
So there are a number of litigation items, and if it's reasonably imminent litigation or pending litigation, as you know, we can go into executive session to discuss those things, and there are a number of those that there will be an executive session for tonight. But we thought, in addition to those, give you a review of some litigation that has come and gone already this year. James wishes that he was here for all of this. He's at a wedding in Idaho, but he wanted me to tell you he wishes he was here to be part of this.
It's a bad wedding if you wanna talk about litigation.
There have been four lawsuits against the county this year that have been filed and resolved, and one that could have become a lawsuit and was resolved short of a lawsuit. Because it's not imminent or pending, we can talk about these in open session and just wanted to make you aware of these four items. And I guess initially, James and I wanted to convey to you kind of the philosophy that we're taking with litigation, and that is that if need be, we're willing and able to take the gloves off and fight things out in court. That being said, we think that usually the better approach is to try to talk to folks, be cooperative where we can, and resolve things early, be forward-looking, and try to get on top of things early and work things out if possible. And these are, some of these cases are places where we've been able to do that. First lawsuit that came in this year was ACLU of Utah et al. versus the State of Utah et al., et al. means, and everybody else on that side. And so when it says State of Utah et al., we're one of those et al.s, where the sheriff's office in particular was sued by the ACLU and Defense Council, Criminal Defense Council organizations. As COVID-19 pandemic hit, our jail put in policies to protect the inmates and jail staff. ACLU and these other groups, without making inquiries to the different counties in the state, sued the state prison and all of the county jails to require that we start doing things to protect the inmates. And it was frustrating to the county attorney's offices throughout the state that they didn't initially find out what was already being done. And James and I participated in a number of Zoom meetings between county attorney's offices and the attorney general's office, where there was a lot of frustration expressed that we are protecting our inmates, and now we're having to fight a lawsuit at the same time and putting resources there instead of continuing to figure out how to best serve the county. The defendants were made, or the plaintiffs were made aware that there was this frustration and that we're already doing things, and they said, "Well, tell us what you're doing." And there were a few counties, ours included, who said, "Let's gather all of the details of what we're doing to protect our inmates and staff at the jail, and go to plaintiff's counsel and say, 'Here's what we're doing. Let us out.'" There were other counties who said, "We want to make a public, more public statement and have the Supreme Court tell the plaintiffs, 'Your lawsuit is crazy,' and get it dismissed." I think both of those approaches were acceptable, but we chose to gather details about what our sheriff's office was doing, present that to plaintiff's counsel, and they did dismiss Cache County fairly early from that litigation. The other counties that chose to stay on were able to kind of make a statement that the case was dismissed by the Supreme Court, that, not every bit of it, but I believe against all the counties it was dismissed. There may have been a portion against the state prison that had to continue. But that's the first case that came and went this year. Do you have any questions about that? The second one was filed by Utah citizens against games of chance by the legislature, or against the legislature of the State of Utah et al., and one of those et al. was James Swink as county attorney. The issue here is that in the last legislative session, there was a bill that the state that, in many respects, tightened up the gambling restrictions in Utah, including, for example, that if you end up with a gambling addiction because somebody's not complying with the law, you can file a lawsuit and get damages to help you overcome your gambling addiction, sort of. There were more avenues for individuals to get recourse. There was, there is a provision, though, in the new legislation that says that you can have an amusement device that doesn't count as gambling, and amusement devices include electronic games. And then there's no definition in the statute of electronic game. And so there, whether that's the claw machine, could be an electronic game, and I'll use that as the example. When you go to a place like the Logan Fun Park or Chuck E. Cheese and play an electronic game, you can get tickets out of the machine and then go and redeem those for little prizes. Part of what the statute does is say that those kind of electronic games, even if it's based on chance, you can get prizes up to $100. The prior dollar limit, I think, was no more than $10, $5 or $10. So it upped the dollar limit. And if you don't directly get the prize, but you get tickets and then go get the prize, there is no dollar limit. So conceivably, you could be playing an electronic game of chance, get a bunch of tickets, and get a new car. And kind of a Chuck E. Cheese-type outfit for adults called Dave and Buster's recently came into Salt Lake, and they, as part of their prizes, do offer iPads and things like that that are well over the $100 amount. And so Utah Citizens Against Games of Chance was concerned that this new legislation in this respect violates Utah's constitutional provision against games of chance. And they sued our county attorney to say, "Don't enforce this new legislation." The litigation wasn't really well conceived because they wanted the whole statute to be unenforceable, even though there are a number of provisions in the statute that tighten down on gambling. And there was some speculation among county attorneys whether this was really a front for some gambling operations to get the whole statute declared unconstitutional because of the provisions that they didn't like. At any rate, we reached out to counsel on the other side and said, "We agree with you. We don't want games of chance in Cache County. It's up to the legislature to pass the law, and we'd like you to just let us out so that we can go and prosecute who needs to be prosecuted rather than be fighting in litigation against you." As we told them that we agree, we don't, we don't like the idea of games of chance in Cache County, they were willing to dismiss us from the lawsuit.
Great.
More than you needed to hear, but I thought it was very interesting.
That's very interesting.
Yep. Thank you.
Third case, you may recall, although it didn't come before the council, it went before our planning commission and Board of Equalization, or Board of Adjustment. Board of Adjustment. A conditional use permit was granted to the Holy Oaks for a private airport out near Wellsville or Mendon. And they were granted a conditional use permit for that, and then the neighbors wanted that conditional use permit to be revoked. And the planning commission went through the process and through the statute and determined that there weren't grounds to revoke the conditional use permit. That went to the Board of Adjustments. The Board of Adjustments said, "That's right. We agree that with that determination." The neighbors were not allowed to present as much at those meetings as they would have liked and didn't like the outcome there. They wanted the conditional use permit revoked. And so they ended up suing both the county and the Board of Adjustment and the neighbors with the conditional use permit. We retained outside counsel Bart Coons, who went to Utah State, was a classmate of James here, and a classmate of mine in law school, very fine attorney that does land use issues in the state. And we filed a motion to dismiss, and these are kind of the arguments we made. I won't go into all of those other than to say that just the legal basis, whether it was even property to appeal that issue to the Board of Adjustment, we argued that it wasn't even something that could be appealed to the Board of Adjustment, that they didn't file their appeal in a timely way, that they, that the neighbors don't really have a property interest in somebody else's conditional use permit and that they don't have standing. We made these types of arguments in a motion to dismiss. After we filed the motion to dismiss, plaintiff's counsel came and said, "Can we have your permission to voluntarily dismiss you from the lawsuit?" And we said, "Only if you will dismiss us with prejudice," meaning you can be dismissed without prejudice, meaning they could sue you again on this if they decide to later, or with prejudice, meaning we've dismissed you and we can never bring it again. We said, "Yeah, we'll agree for you to dismiss us if you'll dismiss us with prejudice." And they said, "Sure." I'm not sure what the status of things is toward the land, the neighbor with the CUP. I didn't look at that, but we're out of that litigation. You'll remember this as well. Pinnacle Estates LLC versus Cache County. This was the denial of a rezone request out by Mendon, where the request was to rezone it to, what was it, RU5, to allow some development out there. And the planning commission recommended against, Mendon declined annexing, and then the planning commission recommended against rezoning in the county. That came to you, and here was why the lawsuit happened. As that came here to the county council, there was no discussion. There was a motion made to deny it and a vote on the motion, and that carried, and the rezone request was denied. Within the week, the Pinnacle Estates sued to overturn that decision. And the primary concern there on their part was that they had been denied the process that they felt was due, that at least there be findings from this body as to why you were denying the request. It turns out that a rezone is the quintessential legislative action that the county council can take. And the Supreme Court says, "If there's any reasonable, any arguably reasonable basis for your zoning decision, you're good to go." There's no requirement about findings on the record or that sort of thing, that, just like you can't sue because they voted for Obamacare or against Obamacare, that's a legislative decision and you can make it. Same with the zoning. We had, the attorney on the other side asked to come and visit, and we spent an hour explaining our position with case law to back that up, that you're just not going to win. The council gets to decide zoning issues, and that's what they did. There's a lesson to be learned in that, though, and it's partly why, in the workshop earlier, I was somewhat emphatic in my request that there be discussion between us being sued for a lack of any public discussion. And then I'll use as another example the solid waste issue that came up at the last meeting, where that resolution was voted down and the reasons why weren't ever really expressed. And in those two instances have led me to talk to some of you privately, but would say to all of you, "I think that it's well to hear more of your thinking and reasoning before these votes happen." In this kind of instance, it would avoid litigation, even if we can quite clearly win that litigation. But as I've now been with the county about a year, there have been these instances where I wish I knew why different votes were happening the way they were, and if a little bit more explanation of why you're going to vote one way or another sometimes can be, can be helpful. The last item did not result in a lawsuit. This is one where it could have, and yet we chose to do a lot of talking and working things through. We had a Eighth West Trail Project where the county is putting in a paved trail over a stretch of the Spring Creek Cache Irrigation Company's canal, and the state statute gives landowners the right to alter a canal, including to take it from being an open ditch to piping it. But if altering the facility causes an increased burden on the canal company, then the landowner is required to pay, compensate for that. We weren't the landowner, but the landowner essentially gave us their rights to go ahead, and they gave us an easement on their land to put in the trail. The canal company said, "You're paving the, our ditch there is gonna cause us a lot more burden." And the key burden that they were concerned about is that by putting a trail over part of the canal, it would bring more people down near the part of the canal that would remain open, and that somebody might fall in, a child in particular, and that they would get sued. We questioned whether that really was an increased burden on them. It was occurring in a place where if somebody did go in the canal at that point, quite soon thereafter, it went under the highway and never came out again for a long ways. So if anybody went in, you're done, and it wouldn't be good. So even though we felt like what they were asking for was more than what the statute allowed, we did talk with the canal company. They wished that we were putting in a new pipe under the whole stretch. We left a piece of old pipe, and we agreed to be responsible if that old pipe fails before the new pipe does. I think I put, we agreed to be responsible for the old pipe if it fails. We agreed to bear the increased cost of putting a chain link fence near where the paved trail ended and the open canal continued, and that there would be a $10,000 payment to the canal company to put in a grate where it went under the highway. And we reached out to Logan City because this is also part of their, connects to their trail network, and they agreed to share that $10,000 cost 50/50. And so we, with Craig's involvement and others all along the way, resolved that short of litigation in a way that we feel like was good. So those are the pieces that have come and gone this year, and we intend to update you again in January, and we'll do some updating later tonight on the ones that are pending.
Question, John, on that irrigation. When I was involved in that a little bit, and I kind of sided with the canal company. You put all those people on that trail there, and you got that open canal, and it goes 70 yards, then under the highway, and forever it doesn't come out. Their concern was, was the tremendous liability if a kid went in there and drowned.
And we're very convinced that under the state statute, they would not be liable, period. But people can sue whether they're gonna win the lawsuit or not, and that there's a burden that you bear just in defending the lawsuit. We don't think that that's a burden that the statute really contemplates us needing to pay to have to defend a lawsuit that is clearly not going to win, but we disagreed with them on that, and that's why we agreed to pay some money and do some things.
See their concern, though.
We do see their concern. Yep, and that's why we visited on a number of occasions and really worked with them on that.
Will, I want you to know, they're not very happy down there.
I feel like they should be, and I would especially say that Matt has been on the ground and worked with them on the ground and been very accommodating. And when you settle a potential lawsuit or settle a lawsuit, that usually means nobody's happy because you've had to compromise, and that's what happened. We weren't thrilled... We, we weren't thrilled at paying out a bunch of money and accepting liability. And they weren't happy that we didn't pay more and, and do more, so it's kind of a sign that there was compromise.
The grate will be installed, but someone can't go float, float down that.
That's their responsibility. We, we've paid the, with the city, $10,000, and that's their responsibility to, to install the grate.
So, you know, that's probably not nothing to discuss here, but the thing I hate about, is being a canal, the canal, um, director and whatnot, is you put a grate in there, and then there is a huge burden to keep all the junk out of the grate. It's a, every two or three days, you gotta go down there and clean it out. Then after you clean it out, you gotta haul it away.
And I, and I would say, and just a couple of thoughts on that particular circumstance, and if Matt wants to chime in, he could. They hadn't been cleaning that stretch of ditch themselves for a long time, and some of that burden had been falling already to the county to clean the ditches. They wanted us to pipe another whole segment down to where the grate's going to go in, even though that's not part of our trail project. We were putting up a fence and willing to, to pay for the grate. The cost to, to pipe and the rest of that would have been upwards of $100,000. And, and so they, they wanted us to make another $100,000 investment, and we just didn't see legally that that was our responsibility, and so we reached a middle ground.
Everybody's got an opinion.
Yep.
We love that, don't we?
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay, uh, other business items, we have the USAC Fall Conference, September 23rd through 25th in Midway. Craig, Carl, Barbara, Dave, Paul.
I should be on there, too.
Uh, Gina.
And, um, Janine, I'll just be going to one night. You need to know what, you know, how many nights.
Which one night?
I will be going, I will be staying Wednesday night.
Wednesday.
Yeah, and we, now, the conference ends on Thursday, right?
Yeah.
So I'll be staying Wednesday night, one night.
Thank you.
And the same with, same with me.
What, you're the same?
Wednesday night, yeah.
You're just Wednesday?
Uh-huh.
Gina, you don't need to make hotel reservations for me, but I'll be going, I'll be going.
Okay, and then the UAC Annual Convention, November 18th through the 20th in St. George. Craig, Carl, Gina, Barbara, John, Paul, Gordon, Dave, and we're inviting no one.
They usually have some kind of a newly elected official orientation or something.
I did, I did, yeah. You can go to the newly elected officials training, where you don't know your head from a hole in the ground. It's about two years later, and I'm in the same boat.
Hundred percent of us, so, uh, it, it.
Very welcome.
It should be fun.
Carl, I had a question. Before we go on to reports, uh, we haven't talked about, uh, council summer social.
That was, that was my next item.
Yep.
Yeah. Gina's the vice chair. That typically falls on the vice chair.
Okay.
To coordinate that.
My forgetfulness of doing that, so my apologies. So, what do we want to do? Do you want to?
Whatever the year we go, I don't care if we do or we don't. We go to Gordy's and have shrimp, boy.
You want to go to your place, Gordy?
We're, we're, we're around to help him do it. John and I, we seem to just help each other, so.
This will be your last hurrah, so.
We gotta get, we gotta get, uh, this John to come. We want to burn his, we want to burn his stomach out a little bit with a little bit.
Creole?
Creole powder, yep. We get to know his wife a little bit, too.
Okay.
You want to come to my place, you gotta get a date.
Let's see, what's a good day?
You can go while I'm fishing, but, well, I guess you could, and I'll just get Cindy to do it.
I think we should call Cindy.
We're on the 20th to the 27th of September.
Okay, so we need to do it before then.
So we're going to be able to get fresh corn on the cob?
We will until it freezes, and I don't think it'll, boy, the way it is, I don't know if it'll even be under nine degrees by then.
We could have the Tuesday we don't meet or something, but.
The Tuesday we don't meet?
Yeah.
That'd be the 15th. Or the first. That's coming up quick.
I think we're the first, because we're out of town on the 15th.
I'm, I'm going to be out of town on the 15th also.
Okay, is that too soon to do it?
First is a week from today.
Yeah, it's a week from today.
Pretty fast.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Are you good with that? Are you good with that?
Oh, I can get shrimp by then.
Are you going to pack a prime weight bender your arm on this one?
I don't know, I, I, I'll get us some, I'll get us some of those big shrimp again.
Okay, so six thirty?
Still those little ones.
At what time?
Six thirty, okay.
What is best for everybody?
Yeah.
Six thirty's good.
Six thirty good?
Because we do, some of us have that, have, um.
Oh, right, the, the board?
Yeah, the Board of Equalization.
Oh, I thought you was going to say, yeah, eat early, because you're getting old.
Well, that's true.
Is there anyone that can't eat shrimp? We used to have a council member's husband that could eat shrimp.
They didn't last very long.
Yeah, they were allergic.
We took care of him. We didn't feed him shrimp.
No, I think we're okay.
Oh, you're fine with that?
Yeah, it's just the Cody, but I don't do hot stuff.
We don't do Cody, we just do Creole powder.
Yeah, that's the part I won't eat. Do you want to do six or six thirty?
Later's better.
Okay, six thirty?
Thirty? Six thirty, September first at Gordy's.
All right, that was easy.
Bring a salad or dessert?
No, the only thing you would bring would be a dessert, and we usually do some rolls, but, you know, the, what we put in the, in the pot is the full meal.
Okay, true. Okay, so bring a dessert.
I'm hungry.
Yeah, so don't eat for, don't eat for a week, so.
Did you say you needed rolls, too, or did you say you'd finish those?
Uh, no, we need somebody to bring rolls.
Susan Lemon used to bring homemade rolls. Is anybody a homemade roll maker?
Too much gluten.
It's really fallen off in that department.
Sharon raised her hand.
Sharon, you want to bring rolls?
Sharon, you want to do rolls?
September, what day? That's a Tuesday.
Tuesday. Okay, awesome.
John, will you come?
Sure.
James never does. He's always out of town.
He comes.
But he can come, too.
I want to meet your wife. I want to see what we got.
Bryce, he brought, Bryce brought his wife, and I'll tell you.
Love to hear that.
I'm getting myself in trouble.
We haven't met her yet.
We would just love to meet and accept your wife.
Okay, summer party planned. Uh, that was quick planning. Good job, Gina.
Yeah, thanks. I'm a pro at that now.
Okay, I, I'd like to start out in the council member reports. We need to acknowledge and thank with deep appreciation Jill and Jill's retirement. The council has a, a gift for you, but it's not ready yet. You'll get it before you leave, though. But we do have this for you, and, uh, I'll, I'll, the rest of the council can speak for themselves, but I, I just want you to know that, uh, you have been a stalwart and an anchor and a voice of reason and good judgment. And, uh, I have really appreciated your guidance, as I've kind of learned what the job of a council member is, and, uh, and everything that, uh, we need to be involved with as, as we try to keep our county moving in the right direction and, and, uh, continuing to make this a wonderful place that it is. So thank you and best to your, yourself and your family, and may this be a lot of wonderful years ahead of you. Open that to anybody else who wants to say anything.
I already told Jill that, uh, now that with all our extra time, that Sid and I will come for lunch about twelve every day. And we're excited, but Jill has been an excellent, you know, she's been classified as one of the very best clerks in the state of Utah, and then she's earned that. She, she's done us an excellent job through the years. I remember when she was hired on with Seth Allen.
Yep.
It is amazing when one thing you're thinking of all the time is set aside how life really opens up for you.
Yeah, you should, you enjoy it.
Yes.
Yep.
Jill, thank you. Thank you for your service. Dedicated. Very much appreciate it.
I have, I, I'm really bad at crying, so don't think that, but, um, I've appreciated all of you, too. It's, I've worked with a lot of councils, but I think you guys are my favorite. I'm gonna move on, and hopefully it'll be really good, but a piece of my heart will still be here, so.
Now, as we look at the changes that have taken place in the elections, just in the last, maybe ten, twelve years that I've been involved with the county, seems like those have all gone relatively smoothly. I mean, there's always hiccups here and there, but, but Jill's always handled those elections professionally, and has, has, uh, I, I've never had any reason to doubt that the returns on those elections are, are anything but, you know, honest and true. It's a very good job.
I'm curious, how many marriages are you responsible for? Over the years?
That's, as far as just issuing the license?
Oh, yes, that, yeah, that.
We issue, county clerk's office issues about 1,500 licenses a year.
Wow.
That's quite, it's funny, because a lot of people come up to you and ask you, do you remember us? And it's kind of hard to remember. That's been a fun part, to do the marriage licenses and see those young couples come in.
Any of you talk out? Any of you deny?
By the time they get to that point, it's usually too late. Well, I have to say, you know, since I've been here, you know, you don't really realize how much time is put in serving the community in a position like this. And to do that for 31 years really says a lot for your commitment, so thank you.
Yeah, they still haven't forgiven you in Clarkston. Remember when you went to that vote?
Oh, no. I did not want to vote by mail.
That was good.
Well, I would say, I'm a big proponent of in-person voting, but that being said, having been involved in the campuses, that I have all the confidence in the world that in Cache County, that the mail-in voting and the, and the clerk's office runs that is top-notch. I still remember the first time I voted, it was in the North Logan City Hall. I got here, and it was, I was in college, and I went and signed my name and everything else. And I still love that whole, uh, event, yeah, but, uh, yeah.
One hundred percent confidence in voting this time, it goes on here.
All right, any other reports from our council?
Yeah, I, when you meet with Logan, John didn't think we had enough discussion over that garbage. I thought we had a lot. I still think, I think Gina's concern needs to be addressed. Somebody needs to be accountable for their bins being filled by others than themselves. I know everybody goes to Porcupine Dam, dumps their junk in that bin in Paradise, and I'm sure the Providence gets somewhere in River Heights. I, it's a great service, but something needs to be done to address that. The other concern was that Logan doesn't pay the dollar either, they just pay the 50 cents, and so that's why.
Well, I'll stick up for Logan. That's because when I, I don't have a bin, I'd have to drive down to the landfill and dump it.
I'll drive to the landfill. I want to be out of there, okay? I'm serious. That's, that's what we talked about. We, we wanted fairness across the board. Of course, you know, we are a county community, but that's, we had that discussion pretty detailed about that.
Well, I, I was. A load on North Logan, so, uh, I think we should charge Logan residents.
I'm in his neighborhood.
I gotta just admit that.
Anyway, when you, when you're discussing, that was a, that was a major concern.
Well, I was in a discussion, in a meeting with the Smithfield City yesterday, and they said, you know, if they paid the extra dollar and Logan actually did come and maintain the site, that would probably be a good deal. But they have to spend so much time policing that, and it's, it's just not working to them. So that was one of their main concerns, and they said they'd rather just have their citizens bring it all the way to, to, uh, Logan, but Hyde Park and North Logan are on the way, so.
Yeah, and that's, and that's why.
That's a problem.
Problem lies.
And Mertie Hollow's on the way, too. I mean, they're going to dump it somewhere.
It's true. And 800 South in Lewiston is on the way.
I'm pretty sure the unincorporated College of Young Ward uses nibbly, so that's just the way it is.
I'm going to say that we don't need, I don't need, if you live in the unincorporated area, usually you have your own place.
You do.
I think.
Yeah, I'm very. I'm very usual with those.
I'm not offended at anything anymore, otherwise I'd get a mill.
Brought that up, well, I'd never go to the mill.
Okay, Barbara, have you got anything?
Yes, tomorrow night, people, um, County Courthouse Cache Celebration of Women's Suffrage here at 6:30 out on the steps. We've got speakers, we've got music, we've got displays. Um, Gina and I will both be speaking, uh, and we're just really excited about it. So please come if you can. Bring, bring your families. It'll be great. Thank you.
Dave, anything?
No.
Okay.
I'm just glad to be here tonight.
Gina?
Uh, I think we got it covered. I was going to thank Jill and talk about the party, so I'm good.
Gordy?
We'll have a good party, I promise.
I have no doubt.
The deck is clean. We just had a birthday party on it, uh, Saturday, so it won't be that big of a burden to just have another one.
Well, thanks.
I got corn in, it's true.
Well, the only thing I'd say is I appreciate the calm and steady and reasoned leadership that, uh, everyone here provides. I am honored to be associated with you.
Thank you. Okay, we have an executive session scheduled, so we'll.
Move, move to go with the executive session?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Is this the one where I quietly turn my phone on or?
Yeah, that's the one. Turn the video on, too. Sorry, Carl?
No, no problem.
For the executive session, usually we have Carl signs that.
All right.
Don't have it, but we'll prepare after.
It brings itself.